My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Jenny David.
Here.
Mark Sir brought. Brad Newbecker. Ronald Bond.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda? I believe we're gonna eliminate, we're gonna postpone seven B. Right?
We are.
Okay, any other additions or corrections? Commissioners?
If the, if a representative from the sheriff's office shows up, I'd like to talk about car washing.
Oh, okay, so would you like that under D?
Uh, yeah, well, we'll just bring it up anyway, yeah.
Perfect.
Even if nobody's here.
Okay, so we'll make that D and we'll put claims as E. Okay with that, Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Any other additions or corrections?
No, also.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with stated changes?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Newbecker made the motion with support from Commissioner Ivan to approve the agenda with the stated changes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Motion carries item three A, review of minutes, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes.
I reviewed the minutes, make a motion to uh, accept them. But the only, the only thing in unfinished business, you didn't know that the sheriff's and corrections department, I don't want you to get in trouble with the sheriff's office, you know? But other than that, I'll make a motion to cover it.
How would you like to change that verbiage?
Which one?
There you go. Yeah, they like to call it. They like to call it sheriff's office. No big thing.
The sheriffs and corrections department, so how would you like her to state that?
Well, I don't care. Sheriff's office and corrections department.
Okay.
The board.
Can we try to have those? Like, I can't get on throughout the day today, can we try to have those on? I know things happen, but just, we try to have those on a little quicker. Uh, do we have a motion to approve those? Mr. Scott approved, uh, support from Commissioner Van.
Alright.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. November seventeen, twenty twenty-two, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I reviewed those minutes, so make a motion, we accept them as presented. Support.
Motion Commissioner Van, support Commissioner Newbecker. Uh, any, any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries item four, public comment on agenda item manners, is there any public comment in the room? Public comment on the phone? Item five eight, we received correspondence from, how do you pronounce that? Gogebit County and
Tonagan.
County related to the auto insurance reform, those have been received and filed. Six, action and consent calendar.
Let's just take them one by one.
Okay, item seven A, resolution to honor Jack Alex Wester, Oklahoma County Veteran of the Year. Um, I know Mr. Wester, so I would like to read this personally, if you guys are okay with that.
Go ahead.
Are you guys, over the commission is okay with that? Resolution to honor Jack Alex Wester, Oklahoma County Veteran of the Year. Whereas Jack Alex Wester has been designated as Oklahoma County Veteran of the Year for his exemplary example as a veteran and longtime advocate of veterans' issues. And whereas Jack Alec Wester honorably performed military services in the United States Army. And whereas Jack Alec Wester was exhibited, has exhibited the highest level of commitment and loyalty to his community and various service organizations by serving in all capacities with the Oklahoma County Veterans Alliance Honor Guard. Past commander of the American Legion Chester Stall Post three seven zero, past exalted commander Redford's Elks. Members most five four four zero, volunteer of the Oklahoma Veterans Museum, conducted fundraisers for Special Olympics along with many other community service activities and whereas Jack Wester has been a great friend to his fellow citizens and veterans. Therefore be it resolved that the Oklahoma County Board of Commissioners declares Friday, November eleventh, twenty twenty-two is Jack Alec Wester Day through Oklahoma County.
Move that we uh, pass the, vote on them. Move the resolution to honor Jack, Jack Alex Wester.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott, I'll support that. Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, do I have to do real call on that?
It's no money.
Good. Post, motion carries item seven C, resolution to approve a Freedom of Information Act policy. This resolution is sponsored by the Oklahoma County Administrator, all persons except those incarcerated in state or local correctional facilities are entitled to full and complete information regarding the affairs of government and the official acts of those who present, represent them as public officials and employees. Oklahoma County acknowledges that this has a legal obligation to disclose all non-exempt public records in its possession pursuant to a Freedom of Information request. If approved, the proposed resolution will be adapted changes in the county Freedom of Information Act policy to assure compliance with the state statute. Think we covered this pretty good in the committee of the whole, is there any? Any further, I guess, can we have a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve the changes to the Freedom of Information Act policy.
Motion Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Newbecker, is there any further discussion on that? I think we covered that pretty well in the
Very good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries item D, uh, car wash. Commissioner Scott, you got the floor?
Today, uh, I happened to see one of our sheriffs, uh, ours at the auto car wash over here in the west end of town and um, I was kinda surprised because we'd been talking about car washing many times in, in our committees of all meetings and stuff. So I called Bill Drum that owns the car wash and asked him about it, now how did we pay? And he says, we have an account. And, but he says, well, there's only ten or twelve car washings a year on it. He usually doesn't bill until he has about twenty-five, and so it takes all year or more before he bills. I think we should make this a, a regular thing, I, I, I mean, our uh, we can't take our transit vans through there, but we sure could take our, our new building and ground, our building, building inspector and trucks through there and things like that, I mean. And all our sheriff's cars and stuff, I mean, we're spending a lot of money buying these things and they're just coating these roads with salt. And there's no reason to eat them up, you know? So, uh, I think we should, I direct our, well, I know that we can direct our building department because it's not authority on its own, so we can direct them to wash their trucks. And I think we should highly recommend to the sheriff's office that they wash theirs on a regular basis.
I thought, isn't there a garage with a power washer and isn't, don't we have all of?
Well, we got a power washer in the garage, I guess, and, and, uh, um, but I don't wanna pay a deputy hourly wage to wash a car when he could be out patrolling the street instead.
Why would we, hey, hold on, one second. Why would we not ask a, a individual that's incarcerated? I thought they did it.
Well, we've had, we've had the past sheriff and this sheriff say they don't wash them at the jail, but I know that Ron's worked there and watched them wash them there. But officially, from the sheriff's op, sheriff, both sheriffs tell us they don't do that. What do they do?
They, they never washed any patrol cars, they did wash the, the vans.
Oh, okay.
So they did a couple of times.
Alright.
Times washed the van.
I don't think they were gonna get the van through the auto wash.
No, no, that, that won't go through.
I, I was under the understanding, I guess, the officer was responsible for their own car and keeping it clean and I, that, that was part of, am I, am I wrong?
They, a lot of officers used to pull them in over there across the street here and, and, and wash their own. And whatnot, but I mean, like Craig said, it's, it's expensive to have an officer in there for an hour washing his, washing his car when you can do it for about a third of the price down there.
Do we know the pricing?
Well, I, I get my truck washed there and it's ten dollars, but I get the, I get the super wash or whatever.
I know, but you start looking at ten or fifteen vehicles going through a couple of times a week, that's gonna add up pretty quick.
Yeah.
If we've got the equipment, why would we not have, I mean, I would much rather in my own, go ahead, I'm sorry, Commissioner Scott.
Well, that's fine, that's fine, you're making a good point, but at the same time, um, we're constantly wanting our, our deputies on the road patrolling, and I, myself, I just assumed have them patrol the roads and have somebody else wash the car.
I don't disagree with that, but isn't there enough vehicles now we have night duty, day two? I mean, I, I don't know that information if, if if there's a, a time lapse where, you know, I, in my opinion, these cars should be on rotations, they shouldn't be cut very clean, that's, that's part of taking pride in your property, in your job, and as far as I'm concerned. Um, but I, I would think that that would all be part of a schedule of, um.
Yeah, well, I don't, I think that's something the sheriff.
Well, I think that's part of the, the reason you wanna have an asset management program is to have scheduled maintenance for every vehicle that you have in the fleet. However, I don't know that it's definitely gonna be a highly needed thing for a vehicle that probably won't last more than ten years as far as patrol cars. Because by the time you get to the ten year mark, they're already at the mileage that they gotta be replaced. And I hope to God the bodies don't rot off them before they're even ten years old, but it is important to keep our assets, uh, in good shape, so we get the highest retail, um, value out of them when we go to put them at that auction. So, I agree, makes sense, but.
What's part? The car wash or air having?
Car wash is fine with me if we can get a decent price on it, and we have scheduled maintenance, so we know that they're not just taking it over there every week just to get it done.
So you don't agree with, with washing your car once a week?
Once a week?
I wash mine once a week. That's what I'm asking.
I wouldn't say once a week, maybe, maybe in the winter time.
Because if, if they're given the opportunity to, if they're given the opportunity to, to run through there whenever it's convenient.
Well, yeah.
And that racks up ten dollars twice a week.
But again, do you really need to be doing that all through the summer?
Well, depending, you know, and if we get a rainstorm and the roads are muddy, you know, do we want our patrol cars just covered with mud? Can't even see what written on the side.
If there's mud on the car, you go get it washed.
Yeah, it, 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 I'm not gonna say you have to wash them on Tuesday and Friday, because if you don't have to, you don't have to, but uh, I'm saying that, you know, we've had discussions with the sheriff's office in here, all the washing vehicles, if he wants a garage, listen.
We settled it.
And, and, uh, uh, I just, and then we have the other vehicles too, now, now the sheriff's office has a pickup truck. And, uh, uh, but building, building department, our, our maintenance right here, once in a while it could be washed, I mean, while the little trucks rusting out is, is we've had plenty of patrol cars that we've gotten rid of in the past, they show rust. You know?
It, it, so then.
That's a lack of washing during the winter, so.
As far as I'm concerned, that, that is extremely important to me, I think, uh, presentation is, is part of, uh, pride and, and I think that shows that you, you care about your property, you care about your job, that's, that's how I operate, and that's how I would operate as a
Community.
As a, uh, in a man, management position, I think since they were able to come up with, uh, something for the kitchen. Um, I think it's worth reaching out to them to see if they can come up with some type of plan for this. If we have the equipment and we're not looking at buying a, a ten thousand dollar, uh.
No, no, it's cool, it's a block away, I mean.
Right, it's worth looking into that, so.
No, I'm not saying we take ten cars down there and line them all up, wash them all at the same time, you know? None, not at all.
I think what you're saying, Craig, is kind of sense, let's keep the keep them halfway clean so that at least you can read the albums on them.
Yeah.
Right, but if they're able to do this and we have the equipment and that's not gonna cost us anything, I, I, I think this should be something we look into before spending money. Uh, did you have something, Mr. Loria?
Well, you, you mentioned it, I say you should do with inmates, uh, wash them. And now you guys, you know, you can get a sprayer, like three thousand, uh, ounce per square inch, and those are clean good, and as long as you get a soap dispenser with them and they will wash your car nice. And a driver can drive up in there, go in the garage right there, start it up, spray it down. It's clean.
I, I think.
As long as I don't get too close to it and peel the paint off of that.
No, no, nothing puts a small tip on it.
I, I.
Yeah, right, you peel a damn thing.
I think we need to find out what equipment we have and, and I think we, can we put this on the committee of the whole, are you okay with that, Commissioner Scott?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, next is claims, we have bills in the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
I looked over the claims today and I'll make a motion to, uh, approve them.
Motion Commissioner Scott?
I'll support.
Support Commissioner Newbecker, is there any discussion, who, can you fill us in, give us the rundown?
Oh. I know we got hit for our our auto insurance this time around, our annual, so that was twelve thousand dollars or something, um. Or a hundred thousand dollars, I should say, is that what it is? Hundred dollars? For some reason, I thought it was.
It wasn't a hundred thousand.
We had some legal bills in there that were.
Oh, was that, yeah, okay, okay.
And we had, uh, some bill, a lot of building, uh.
Building department had.
Department had a bit.
Yeah. It's a little examiner.
Sideways. Insurance was a hundred nine, and transit had a. There was, um, the well, they dug the well for the park. Uh, that was almost three thousand dollars.
Total right there.
Yeah.
What's this Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan Jail Service Health Service inmate medical expense, what's that? Twenty-four hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Hold on, hold on.
Did I know? Huh?
I can take a guess at it, um, and what else? I wish you're here again, to verify for sure, but, uh, we end up, um, for all of our inmates, because Blue Cross is the coverage of last resort and inmates that come in are covered under a very basic Blue Cross policy, so if they end up having to go into the hospital or something like that, there's coverage and obviously that saves the county some money anyway, uh, if that happens, if that's what it is, I, I at least I'm taking a guess.
And then I see the pharmacy on there too, holy smokes, nineteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars, we gotta be getting close to a, a, uh, three month or six month comparison again, are we?
I'm actually, well, I have the annual comparison, uh, finish the fiscal year.
Can we get that when you're able to? I would love to see that.
Yeah.
Because of the rushed, rushed schedules of the meeting when Brad and I were here today, we, we only got to see the cover sheets with the breakdown, we didn't, if we wanted to, we could have took oh, would have dived deeper for the individual, uh, receipts.
Yeah, there's that well, twenty-nine, twenty-nine hundred fifty-five dollars.
That was put in last spring and that bill was sitting in a mailbox. There's a mailbox for parks and rec in the, in the mailroom and I, I know I never checked it and it's been sitting there waiting to be found. So, uh, that was done last spring and Steve Simmons did a lot of the work for nothing. Matter of fact, that's mainly materials.
And then, um, transit, transit had a lot in there.
Huh?
Yeah, transit had.
Parts and, um.
Blue Cross Blue Shield, where'd it go?
Fleet.
And I just seen another side one, a uniform one that was, what is that? Uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan Jail Service Health Service inmate medical expense, twenty-four forty-eight oh five. Do you need the number?
And there was the signing, I think, uh, or, no, there was, there was a signing, uh, one on there that was pretty high too.
The what?
What, is it twenty-nine hundred, you saying?
Yeah, what's the uniforms for eleven hundred dollars?
Oh, yeah.
Thirteen hundred dollars for uniforms too, what?
Oh, you see uniforms quite a bit, both sheriff's office and corrections. Um.
New officers.
For eleven hundred dollars?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, there is, uh, provision in the union contracts that, uh, deputies are entitled to certain equipment on an annual basis, like boots and things of that nature, and
Yep.
this could be, uh, what's going on there. It's not like just, you know, one person's complete uniform, I'm not saying there are some in there, but there would be some other.
The, the bill here is for the sheriff's truck, the truck too is on that.
Yeah.
On that list, and then the transit got that van that was sixty-three thousand dollars.
We got parts for the sheriff vehicles for five thousand dollars.
I don't know what the Blue Cross is.
Which page is that one?
Facility cases. Professional.
What page was that, Jen?
What?
That five thousand dollars, I was looking for that earlier.
Five thousand what? What'd I just say?
Uh, sheriff's.
Custom signal go, signals incorporated sheriff's parts, that is on page, what page am I on? I don't know.
Uh, uh.
Page eighteen.
Eighteen of twenty?
It's the fourth one down, whoop, it's the third one down. Five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars.
It looks suspiciously like, uh, that's so much repair, but maybe light bars or something on one of the vehicles.
Was that made out too?
Custom signals.
Well, yeah, I saw that, I was thinking that.
Five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. And there's another one for Team Hades Sheriff Parts for two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
What's the, uh, the Great Lakes Monitors?
Great.
It is.
Great Lakes Technology.
Oh, there it is.
Maybe others, I don't know.
Holy crap, six eighty-three, three thirty-nine, three fifty-one for them.
Just, I'm just wondering why is it broke out into three different bills?
Page is that a?
Four, four different bills, Fred.
Are they two different lines of business?
No, it's all underneath equipment, sheriff.
What you got?
Oh, customers spelled K as in.
K U S.
Yeah.
This one is.
Well, that was the lettering, wasn't that what we were?
This is spelled K U S.
Yeah.
P O M.
Custom signals is mostly radar equipment. Looks like radar guns, food detection equipment.
I don't remember hearing, don't you have to come for five thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars.
So I don't remember hearing about that, did I miss it? Five thousand one hundred and thirty dollars.
Find out for sure what it is, that's for like a single purchase, so if they, if these were for radar guns and they're sighting them in or something, that's that would be a service contract, it wouldn't necessarily come here.
Wow.
Customs.
Really?
Can we get some, uh, follow up on that, five thousand before we approve it?
I got the bill right here.
Oh, yeah.
This is the custom radar. Three radars. Yeah.
What, what is it?
Eagle two radar.
Rim shub. One, one piece unit, nine foot cable, twenty-one foot cable. Windshield antenna mount. It's not, it's not a service, it's.
No, it's all.
For three separate vehicles.
Yeah. It's all the everything for the radar. The cables and remote, uh.
For what? For the new cars?
Hmm, must.
Is there eight dates on there?
It must be, it doesn't say on here, it just says.
That's for sure.
Date eleven twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah. Roll that up to the bottom. So the total here is fifty-one thirty, but in, on the claims, so isn't it five thousand even?
No, it's five thousand one hundred and thirty.
Oh, is it? Okay, alright.
Um, the truck and the two, but we have two new.
Well, we've had those for quite a while.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
I.
I, I think we should wait till we hear from them.
And then, and then once again, you know, we bought a truck now to patrol with, I don't know why we're, right.
What truck?
The truck, the truck, we ordered that three-quarter ton truck for the sheriff's office and it's here now.
Yeah.
What are we doing with it?
Well, it'll be used for marine ORVs automobile, you know? And many other things and, and, uh, you know, that was the thing we talked about earlier in the year, you know, first they were gonna get this the, the high speed model or whatever, the, the interceptor model, and it's like, no, you don't need that.
What was the other one?
A bunch of them for Great Lakes Technology.
Yeah, there's four different.
Screens, monitors?
Monitors or something.
Don't know. My, yeah, they do all say monitors. And one says supplies.
I saw Chris bet earlier, he said he was gonna be here at the meeting, but so, so we're, we're, uh, I guess what I'm seeing here is oh, okay, so what, we have two different claims here. Because earlier in the months, since we didn't have a meeting, that's the big one. The four fifty-eight, and then what we looked at today was one fifty-three. Alright, yeah, some of this stuff wasn't on.
Oh, I said a hundred and forty-one, yeah, the, I'm sorry, the, the total is one fifty-three, three forty-eight, ninety-two.
Right, and that's the, that's today's claim.
November twenty.
Right, and there's the other claim that's on there is
Three. I'm sorry.
Eleven ten.
Hang on, let me go back to it. One fifty-three three forty-eight ninety-two.
What the eleven ten claims is four hundred and fifty-eight.
Yeah, I seen that earlier, let me go back to it, I seen it last night.
And I didn't look at any of that today.
And then why would we approve it?
I see why we're, we're kinda questioning a whole bunch of different things that I didn't think I saw.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable approving that until we, we hear more about it, so.
So are we talking about just, um, those three line items or?
Well, the one, that's fifty-one thirty. Uh, would definitely fall into that RFP category, but and this is where you need the explanation, or what we need the sheriff here to talk about it, if this was part of the equipment that we approved for the purchase of the vehicles, then you've already approved it. But we can't tell from this if that's what it is or not.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we be able to tell from the resolution that we approved to, uh, purchase those vehicles?
Um, that, that cost would be broken out, uh, by itself, so we typically will include the cost of the vehicle and then a lump sum cost to equip it, so it would include like radar radios, decals, all of that as a separate item, but we wouldn't break it out to that level of detail. And again, we're, we're guessing because we, we don't have the, the partner represented tonight, so it'd be very appropriate to pull it and talk about it at the Cal meeting.
Yep, is there anything else on there you guys wanna pull?
Oh, so have we paid these bills from eleven ten?
Eleven ten you did.
Okay.
Eleven twenty-two, not yet.
Alright, alright, so I'm not, I'm not approving, I'm not voting right now to, for eleven ten?
No, you're voting on eleven twenty-two.
Okay.
One hundred and fifty-three dollars, three forty-eight.
That's what I thought, I made the motion before, yeah, okay. Or just five thousands in that one. Right.
I thought I had the other one, where, where is the, is, uh?
Two pages back.
I know, I seen it, where is it?
Seventy-one.
It's not my event.
It just beat back to it.
Uh, he said turn this thing off and back out, and it's, it's not doing anything. Uh, looks like Sheriff's Department got four new monitors.
Just sheriff's vehicles are coming?
They got four new monitors from Great Lake, for what?
That was the six eighty-three forty-eight, um, carrying a dog.
Why were they broke down individually?
Nine eighty-one, uh, it's an equipment line.
Huh?
We're just.
What is going on, guys? We just.
We'll speak up louder.
The line item, it's a, you know, equipment vehicle, vehicle, equipment line, the nine eighty-one tells us that. But I think we knew that, it was, uh, radar. But I think we knew that it was, uh, radar.
We knew that how?
Looking at the number. Well, we pulled up the invoice and we knew it was radar.
I thought she just said a monitor.
Well, that's for the Great Lakes Technology.
What do you, what do you want me to look at?
Monitor, so those, um, like monitors that go in the cars with the computer?
There's one for Doug, one for Carrie, one for Stahl Junior and one for Sheriff's Office. So I'm gonna guess no.
I think they're computers monitors, right?
Yeah.
Well, if Tom's on. Maybe he can put some light on it.
They purchased monitors at different times. The reason that their invoice different was because there was different costs. They ordered them separately throughout the course of about a month and a half.
workstation monitors?
Yes.
And they were rotated out because they were, um, the old ones.
Cause all that, all they had was about seventeen inches over there.
Well. So how big are these?
Twenty fours.
Ooh, what, what did we do with the old ones?
I have some of them in the county building. I've been rotating them out with other ones.
We're gonna auction them off or?
No, I'm re, I'm reusing them.
Sounds like they're not eligible yet. Geez.
Why would you deprive somebody of a small screen if somebody else gets a big screen? I'm just asking.
Any more you'd like me to look up? Any more discussion?
No, I think it's just that what, what custom signals is the one we're, uh.
Questioning.
Question.
The five one three O.
Yeah, let's pull that. I, I feel, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, we'll pull that until we get more information.
I'll put it down in the cow agenda for next Thursday and have them come in and tell us.
Are you gonna do analysis as well, uh, for the medical contract?
Right.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with change. Support.
Any further discussion?
No.
Roll call vote.
Um. So in this motion, would you like me to subtract the five thousand one hundred and thirty from the total?
Yeah.
Um. Brad New Becker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Absolutely.
Absent, Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Next week.
There.
I'm sorry. Next we have the claims from eleven ten, twenty twenty two. And the amount of four hundred and fifty eight thousand, three hundred and seventy six dollars and seventy four cents. Did you, did you guys have or did not have an opportunity to look these over?
I have not looked at them and I didn't see a breakdown.
I thought somebody came in and reviewed those.
Nobody has and.
Two, two weeks ago, yes.
Yeah. Did you come in two weeks ago?
Yeah.
I don't think I did.
You.
Thought that you did. Yeah, you came in, you came in and.
Did I? I was here that day. I seen you come in.
I'm gonna.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't see a breakdown of this though. Did I miss it? So, and voice TV, I did nothing. But it was, it was.
Gotta rotate it.
It was a little, yes. That's, I thought, what is this? Anything standard, what, what on this guys?
Last, last, uh, two weeks ago, nothing really stood out at all.
It was huge though.
Four hundred thousand dollars?
But you had a lot of bills come in, like the one umbrella policy came in at over two hundred thousand by itself.
What?
Umbrella insurance.
Insurance.
We insured our umbrellas.
Right.
That's a once a year.
Right, yeah.
And this is the one where the sheriff's car is in there in the transit van. Isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Silverado, forty thousand, twenty seven dollars.
That's the truck.
Twenty twenty three Chevy Silverado.
Oh, I got to claim.
Insurance is for a hundred thousand.
Else here, yeah. Okay.
Road Patrol Village, thirty three thousand, sheriff's truck was forty eight thousand. Transit was a hundred and sixteen thousand. Those are vehicles as well. I'd, I'll make the motion to approve that because I, I looked at those and I didn't see anything.
I think I must have too. I'll second.
What was your question about? New Becker was support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion on those? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad New Becker.
Yes.
Item eight unfinished, unfinished business.
No.
Item nine administrators report.
We'll start by announcing the saga of fifty one seventy one Lake Ridge Drive is over. We were able to close on that property yesterday. Uh, check has been deposited with the treasurer, so that's good. That money, uh, property was sold for forty two thousand. Uh, there were some, uh, closing costs involved that got, uh, uh, got us to a total of just over thirty seven thousand. That actually goes back into the housing program and goes back into the community for, uh, other housing projects moving forward. So it was a nice, uh, boost for that program. Um, well, I'll let you know that I've been working with a few other counties, um. Ogama and Roscommon Sheriff's Circuit Court and Claire and Gladwin Sheriff's Circuit Court. Uh, we'll be meeting with administrators and some other officials from Gladwin, Claire and Roscommon County, uh, in December. To talk about, uh, and brainstorm ideas on juvenile facility. We are all, um. Is subject to some pretty high costs if we have to have, uh, uh, juvenile in our custody for overnights. And, and for, you know, forever long the court's decide that we need to keep them. Uh, and there's a potential opportunity here, particularly with Gladwin County is facing some, uh, significant, um. Capital expenditures for new jail. And there's just an opportunity here to talk about, well, how best might we do this if we group together as four counties? And we agree to take their inmates and they agree to take juveniles from here, that maybe we've got something we can work with. Uh, something much more affordable. So we'll just start those conversations and I'll keep you posted as we move forward. I am gonna bring, uh, uh, Michael LaFaye with me because he is really the expert in terms of how all this would work with childcare fund. Uh, and, uh, I think, uh, uh, one of the other counties was bringing somebody with a similar, uh, background, probably Claire. Uh, just to make sure that we are talking, uh, reality here and we don't get straight into an area that we can't do. But this reminds me so much of the, uh, group of counties that got together, uh, hosted by McCosta County. And put together a morgue when they were faced with, uh, major medical, uh, examiner costs. And they really have made that work. And I think there's an opportunity here to, to at least explore it and, and determine what we can do. And I think it would be a missed opportunity if we didn't. So, um, that, that will happen. I'll keep you posted.
Well, that was, that was something that we, uh, talked about at the Gladwin meeting.
It, it is. Uh, had our annual review with the accident fund. They're the, uh, risk carrier. They deal with slip and falls and, uh, workers comp cases. Um, we. Were very unimpressive. We had one claim last year and that was it. Uh, so there are a lot of. You know, things to, uh, address and they were obviously pleased with that. Um, so that occurred. And finally, uh, we have six applicants now for the administrative secretary position. Those applicants are now on the Google Drive under administrative secretary applicants folder. If you want to look at those, I have, uh, asked commissioners, uh, Scott and Serbrook, uh, for a date next week. Potentially right after the cow meeting to do the interviews and, and get this moving along. Uh, if you have any, um. Input that you want to have on any of these candidates, please share that with me and we'll make sure that we, uh, address that. We do have that standard set of questions that we'd asked for, uh, when we hired Mary. So I think we're pretty well set there. It's just a matter of scheduling. That's it.
But, uh, looking officials and department heads. Clerk.
Uh, Brett Gilde, Ogama County Clerk. The only update I have is that the election is done. And I'm happy. Everything was smooth.
Anything else? Any other, uh, Jeff, I think you're on the phone? Do you have any updates?
Hold on, I gotta unmute him.
There we go. I couldn't get unmuted. Uh, no, I don't have any new updates. Um. I'm sorry I got here late and so I didn't see, I see I was on the agenda early. I appreciate it. But, uh, again, I apologize for being late.
Okay, we, we, uh, we did read aloud the resolution to honor Mr. Jack Alex Wester, Ogama County veteran of the year.
Thank you.
Tom, do you have any updates?
No, not at this time. Thanks.
Yep. Any other, uh, lots of officials or department heads that I missed? Any matters, uh, from the floor? Motion for adoption? Committee reports? I have none.
Oh, I was at the airport meeting the other day. We, the farmer was there and we went over what we're doing east of Peach Lake Road. And there'll be more clearing in the spring. And, uh, probably, uh, this, this next spring, we should be farming everything east of. East of, by the end of the summer, we should be farming everything east of, uh, Peach Lake Road.
Mm-hmm.
That can be farmed other than low land. And, uh. I attended, uh, Ogama Township. I went to the city of West Branch yesterday. For Commissioner Serbrook, but I'll start going there anyway first of year. Um, they, they had their audit done and the audit report was given last night. Uh, they were up on revenue and down on cost. So looking pretty good. Um. Uh, Ogama Township was kind of a quick meeting. Uh, I went to Horton Township, uh, this last month, uh. Not a lot going on there. Uh, I ask at all the townships that I go to. Whether or not the, they're gonna ever have these, uh, MTA, county MTA meetings and. It's all up in the air, so I don't know. Um. Road commission meeting is tomorrow morning, so I don't have anything to report from there.
Commissioner New Becker?
I had airport as well. Um, we discussed, we also discussed, uh. Um, how to move forward with the airport, uh, manager.
Right.
More to come with that. And, um, I, I can't, I don't have my notes with me, but, uh, we also discussed the, uh. Line five and some, uh, energy, uh, solutions on the property as well. It wouldn't have anything to do with the county, but, uh. Just, uh, other things that we can do with the land that, uh. Would be approved to keep the, uh, vegetation from. Getting higher. Not just farming, we're looking at a lot of different things and, uh. It was a good meeting. That's all I have.
Mr. Vaughn?
Um, I had nothing.
Uh, I got a question for you. It's the December, the next, uh, would be the committee of the whole. Meeting, right?
Mm-hmm. Next, next week?
Yeah, will that be December first?
It would.
Okay, then that'll work for me a morning one, because I was thinking of the following week, then like.
We just won't have a meeting here last week of the month. And we had a resolution a few minutes ago that fixed that.
And the calendar didn't get updated.
So what are we doing?
We did update it, so I don't know.
I just looked at it today.
So what do we have for the first, first, for in December? December first is, uh, committee of the whole A A M meet, A A morning?
Yeah.
And then the eighth, I actually will be in the hospital that week, so I, we can keep that meeting. I just won't be able to attend or we can make it a P M meeting. That's up to you guys.
I have no.
What is that?
Bobby.
I have no problem if you want to move it till, to the afternoon, if you want to, I don't care.
I would appreciate it. We could do a five P M.
That's fine.
I could with you, right?
Yeah.
All right. It's from January that.
What'd you say?
Is in here. What is going on?
The eighth.
The eighth will be.
Five P M. Meeting versus, uh, uh.
He's saying first, say he's the same.
Confirming it's five o'clock and that's five thirty.
Yeah, you guys okay with that? Right. It doesn't matter what.
Well, for me, five sharp.
That's what I figured. Thank you.
In the rest of the month, it's okay?
Yeah, yep, I just do the hospital.
Just, uh, the week of Christmas, we'll do it on Tuesday again.
Okay.
Twenty third, right? Hmm, isn't it? When's Christmas?
Christmas is on a Sunday, so we probably meet the twenty second.
Okay, yeah, we're good.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I.
It's on the twenty second.
For some reason I thought it was on a Thursday.
Hmm. No, twenty, twenty fifth Sunday.
Okay.
Okay.
And Brett, you're right, this calendar did not get updated, so.
Yeah, I told my claims, the claims calendars went out today because I looked at that calendar and. Our schedule shows the eighth for the department, so do you want? We need to update it.
Yeah, so is, uh, county building closed on Friday the twenty third?
Yes.
But it's real, none twenty sixth. Twenty seventh, so twenty seven.
Monday off.
Is that both weeks?
Both weeks.
So when are we getting anything done?
It's just the talent that you have.
I know, we will get it all done. That's surprising. Still be able to take four days off in two weeks.
Any, anything else? We'll get that calendar updated.
I'll do that tonight, yes.
Okay. Any, uh, any other, any general public comment on any items?
It's my mom?
No. I forgot to tell her.
Just say you gotta give me the days of those meetings again.
Any, anybody on the phone that has any general public comments? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion with support to adjourn at six sixteen. All in favor, say aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Motion carries.
Well, I was gonna add, is anybody heard anything about the dollar star around fifty bucks?